The United States. Into the full chance of one nation. Under God, invisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay. Who holds on to the agenda? Any changes or regulations?
I, one thing that I would add is just to have a, uh, some additional discussion, you know, to the, uh, the speed on, on route four. I did, I left it off my manager's report, so.
Route four?
Uh, I'm in fourth, sorry. Route one eleven. And the, uh, and the OT's response as the lower speaker.
Put that under your manager's report? Anything else?
Irish, she was having their meeting tonight, so.
Are we falling in line with their, our meeting and their meeting?
Um, so I looked ahead at the schedule and the next meeting is going to be off. You know, there's a couple of meetings that coincide. It always happens, but so.
There were no other changes, approval of the agenda?
Cool.
Second?
Okay. And all in favor? We have a public hearing on a premises license doing business as Ledgewood has this golf. Anyone here called the, this, uh, could you come up to the table, please?
Believe you have, uh, in, maybe if I pronounced it last name, Rubo?
It's Robo, but yeah, Rubo would be the, the common pronunciation.
Mr. Robo's application for the, um, letting it pass into this golf facility. It's going, it's going in, it's pretty much bleeding out on this road.
Yeah, we're, we're getting close. We're probably a couple of months out before we can open, but the building's just about done and, uh, we're still working on the course, but yeah, we're getting close.
He's seen his, um, like, relative to, uh, the clubhouse, uh, the ability to sell malt, uh, beer and wine.
Yes, correct. Yeah, all pre, prepackaged, uh, just like cans, basically.
Is that for just in the clubhouse or for use out on the course?
So it would be, it would be for use on the course as well. Yep.
That's what I'm showing you.
Something you can use to check out?
Uh, all permitting, local permitting, he's on the receiving end of the project.
Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Robo?
Make a motion, we approve the, um.
There'll be after your public hearing there.
Oh, geez, that's right. Sorry, sorry. Yep, 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 yep.
No further questions, no questions, then we will close the public hearing. And we'll be voting on this under business.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And public forum, public comment on non-agenda items. Anyway. Thanks so much for public forum. Prove the minutes of July eighth.
Make a motion, we approve as submitted.
Motion made by Dan, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by tone? Any comments? All in favor? One abstention, one abstention. And no committee and board reports? And managers report?
Uh, yes, uh, um, just an update on where we are with the, uh, compactor to transfer station. Uh, Terry and I spoke this morning, uh, we're still awaiting the A B switch uh, to be delivered, so, um, Casco Bay Electric, we used to be Plamondin can install it. Once that's done, um, Terry can coordinate with the company to come down and place the compactor. So it's a, a wait and see game. Um, once we have it, then we can schedule for them to, to place it in.
Any idea when that might happen?
They said that that switch was supposed to be in ten days. It's been almost three weeks.
Uh, just a quick update, um, uh, we are able to pick up engine forty-four today. Uh, it was put in service by the fire department at five thirty this afternoon. Um, you'll see in your AP warrant that, uh, we cut a check. Uh, didn't realize that we had to cut a check before they would release our truck back to us, even though it's an emergency vehicle, but, um, that was their choice. So we cut the check and, um, uh, picked the truck up, so. Um, any specific questions about the truck? You can relate to the chief. I know they were putting it in service tonight, so.
And then the, I, I understand the insurance company will reimburse us.
Yes, uh, as I understand, uh, the MMA will provide a check, uh, one thousand dollars less than what the, the payable is based on our, um, deductible. I, I wanted to have a little chat relative to, um, Fire Station Building Committee. Um, we have, with the exception of, uh, David Lane reaching out to me, rest, requesting to be on the committee, I have had no other, um, folks other than, uh, fire service personnel, and I think Andy can probably fill us in on that as well as you folks, uh, being on the committee. Um, so I think what I'd prefer to do would be to get started, establish a, a date that we can meet. Um, Andy and I have spoken about this, some of the needs that we're looking at. Um, we've kicked around some ideas that we can, uh, obviously share with you folks. I've had one company, one architectural company, uh, Port City Architects have already reached out to us wanting to get involved um, with, uh, uh, with assisting us in whatever design criteria we want. I'm not sure that we want to just take one architect forum or go back out to RFP. All these questions obviously need to be answered by you folks, but I think we've waited an appropriate amount of time for other citizens to get involved and, um, it'll be up to you folks whether or not you want to set some dates and get rolling on this. So let me know. You can let me know tonight or think about it, whatever you want to do.
I think it's time we set some dates and got moving on this.
You want to start in August, we can? Okay. On off week? Um, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to go, you're off Mondays if we can. And that way we just meet on Mondays.
Yeah, I prefer not Mondays so that I can attend the Irish new meeting.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
But.
All right. It looks like we're going to have a small group, so if, even if we went on Tuesdays, we could go in the large conference room and leave this for the planning board on the nights that they are meeting. So what, what do you prefer?
Tuesday the sixth.
What's that, Tuesday the sixth?
Okay, let me see.
Now, um, so we still have ways of permitting regulations that I can't. Tuesday the twenty? Wednesday, Wednesday the seven? And the fourth, Wednesday, Wednesday's Monday.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Wednesdays are, Wednesdays are actually a better day for me, so.
Yep. That Wednesday the seventh?
To the seventh.
Yep. Yep.
At, uh, seven o'clock? Okay, do you want to start earlier or seven, fine?
Yep, seven's good.
Okay, good. See you all on the seventh.
Yeah, and hopefully, you know, as we start communicating out, you know, some of our progress or whatever, maybe we can get other people on board.
Correct.
Start seeing.
Right, and we'll, I mean, obviously we'll, uh, if we're in this room, we'll make sure we have the camera rolling and we'll post it and whatever minutes. Yeah. Um, this is an, uh, before we get to the next subject matter on the, on the list, just an off, I'm trying to wrap up, I should have asked to put it on there, um, trying to wrap up the quick claim guide for, for Elizabeth Weimer. I mean, we updated the, the, um, uh, the plot plan, and that's been provided to our attorney. But one of the questions is asked by the attorney is, how many years have we actually used that section of Brimstone Road slash Limerick Road that we turn on that really isn't our property? I, I indicated to him that was thirty-plus years that I could think of.
Phil?
Brimstone and Limerick Road, that, that turn there, that we're going to try to redo that intersection.
At least eighty years that I know of.
Eighty, yeah.
When I, when I was, when I was several years old, I used to ride that on the bike, pedal bike. And when I plowed from the town in the fifties, we used to plow that.
Okay.
George Maldonado.
Okay.
At least that long.
So if I say, um, uh, seventy-plus years, I wouldn't be exaggerating at all. Okay, all right, that's, I, I think he just wants to have it so we can put it into the, um, the quick claim that he'll present to Attorney Reed, who will give to his client. Um, hopefully she'll sign it and then we'll get it recorded, so.
So that, obviously that has to get taken care of before any type of work or whatever gets, starts getting done over there.
Correct, yeah. Correct. And if you have, if none of you have recognized or seen that the pole is removed, it's gone now, so just a matter of, you know, Terry and I just, he just learned tonight that it was removed, so. Uh, perhaps we can do something there.
Yeah, Richard told us twice. Yeah, to make sure that was the pole that we were talking about.
Right, right, okay.
Do you, if we do that this year, do we have funds to do that?
If you're a rule, you know, that's.
Why I'm asking?
Yeah, let's, uh, we may be able to shave it down a little bit, so there's not a lump there and maybe do something, but Terry and I haven't even spoken about it yet, so we'll see what we can do, if anything. Um, I wanted to bring to your attention the, um, street and sidewalk excavation ordinance. Uh, I provided a copy within your, your packet uh, that was left on your desk. Uh, the reason I bring it up is that, um, you know, ju, great timing for us, but, um, Clearview, uh, just recently got paved. And immediately after paving, we got a contact from a utility company that wants to do a cross, cross-section boring underneath the road for their client, uh, for connection. Um, it, it got us looking at the ordinance in, in terms of the bond amount that we should be setting aside. Now, if you look at the section three on bond, um, it indicates, uh, thousand dollars for crosscut openings. Uh, and then it says ten dollars per foot or a thousand dollars, whichever is greater for parallel openings. So when I saw that, both Terry and I feel it's, it's probably extremely low and, um, I felt this was a good time that we may tap, uh, uh, select board member Labby's mind as to what, um, his thought is, but initially when I did, um, some research on, uh, crossboard row, rowings, um, um, they were indicating anywhere between, um, seventy and a hundred and fifteen dollars per foot for a crosscut. So when I start doing the calculations, we could be three thousand dollars for a crosscut opening as a minimum and, and then, uh, establish a per foot charge greater than that, um, to at least make our cover, uh, to cover. And I, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm even below in our area if that, um, Phil, if that's, uh, if that's still low based on your experience on these things.
I think thousands of dollars for crosscuts is too long.
Okay. Right.
Are they, are they looking for that or are they looking to bore under the road?
Oh, they're going under the road. We're not going to let them cut the road.
Yeah.
But if we have to go in there, um, we're just looking, we think that's extremely low. Um, but we have no, we had no way of adjusting it, and so the utility company's going to be doing it. We'll float a bond as what the ordinance says. So really what I'm trying to do here, and I'm not really expecting a, an answer tonight, but uh, it's something that we need to, um, sort of prepare and get, get ready to adjust. Um, and then perhaps, um, either go to a special annual town meeting to make the adjustments because it has to be town meeting approval. The other thing on this too is that we do not have any fee. There's no fee established for this sidewalk or street excavation ordinance. So I don't know if we wanted to establish a fee, if we want to get the planning board involved in, in establishing this, or is this something that we, you would take recommendations from staff uh, before we go forward?
How much? How much were we expecting the bond for the boring? I mean, because there's nothing in here about boring, right?
It's just crosscom, thousand dollars for crosscut openings, period.
They're not doing a crosscut.
Well, they're going to do a boring.
Right.
So we assume boring crosscut, it's the same. We provide, they're going to provide, uh, provide us a war, uh, a bond based on what is in section three of this bond, um, section for ordinance.
If we're going to change this, we should be, we should be clear that.
Crosscut slash boring?
Boring, because somebody could read this and say, why are you charging me? There's nothing here about borings.
Well, they haven't pushed back on that.
They haven't, but somebody could.
Yep, you're right.
A question for Phil. Do you run into a fee for this Phil on some of the jobs that you do? Do other towns have a fee plus a cost?
Yes, they do. Everyone, every town, there's speed and I think these are probably lower than most towns. Thousand for crosscut probably wouldn't be enough. If they're boring, that might be okay. They don't do damage.
I, I've seen a lot of times, uh, of water that um, batteries are going to go up now, but the water they drink is down on river. And it hit a piece of land or something. It came out. So plus I know one up on the Alford Road is Kenny brought by you'll go to brother's shirt about, right on that corner. Uh, that was a cross one of that. What I understand. So.
So there, there's really no objections from, from this board if we come forward with some recommendations as to, and share them with you folks, and then if that seems to be appropriate, um, then we can develop a course of action moving forward, either with a special annual town meeting. We don't get many, I don't think we've had many requests for these types of, uh, events, so.
That's going to include you and the water they drink has done some crosshairs. Uh, especially on river, they have water effects.
Yep. Right. So.
But the fee should be the same whether it's crosscut or boring, because there's always a chance of that. That's, um, not the fee, the bond, and then the, we also should set a fee.
Yeah, we'll do some more research. I, you know, I just mentioned the fee because we don't have one and I didn't know what other municipalities were doing at this point, so we'll come up with some, some recommendations for you to consider.
Okay. How about Route one eleven?
Well, yeah, that, you all, you all may know that we had a, uh, an accident there this past Thursday involving a motorcycle and automobile um, at Limerick Road and Route eleven. Um, I continue to think it's based on speed. Um, and I think I've shared with you the emails, uh, that we've been receiving from the traffic engineer from M D O T. Uh, some responses from our elected officials relative to that. Um, but unless I'm reading those emails wrong, um, it doesn't appear that the state's going to do anything until we do a, some sort of speed study or an engineering analysis on that section of road. Um, I provided to you in your packet, um, the requirements for the speed study that are outlined by the, uh, state. Um, and ironically, I was informed, um, that, you know, me as the town manager can ride on up there and sort of make some sort of argument as to what the speed is. Well, I'm not qualified to do that. Um, I, you know, I, I don't ride that road on a daily basis as min, most of you folks may, particularly during the commuting time. And if we want to continue to pursue the speed study, I would strongly suggest that we, uh, hire a engineering firm to come out and put together a packet for us to present to M D O T, um, outlining our arguments, if that's something that you want us to do. Um, it appears that if we request it somehow, that they may do it, but from what I'm understanding, they're not, they're not going to do anything to any of those intersections until twenty twenty-seven. So, I mean, we're looking at, uh, three years away, and I'm not quite sure we want to wait three additional years. And perhaps some more tragic events out there before we do anything, so. I sort of guess I'm looking for your guidance as to what you think we should be doing at this juncture.
I think we should be pushing hard for lights then, never mind speed reduction.
Speed is a giant waste of.
I do too. I think a light would be, would be a heck of a lot safer, lights.
Speed only going to be as good as the enforcement.
And.
We have, we have a police officer eighty hours a week.
Right. And we get speeders all over town that people bitch and complain about, and he can't be everywhere, and so.
That road twenty-something years, and you could put the speed limit at twenty-five miles an hour on eleven, and they're going to go ninety. No, no joke.
Except for one car that's going to go twenty-five.
That's one that's going to get wrecked.
Yeah.
So, um, let's, let's just talk about this a little bit, um. You know, I'm hearing, I'm hearing that the speed may not be an appropriate way to pursue this. I'm hearing, uh, uh, traffic light. I think we, we realize that, um, uh, new road may, may be a consideration for a traffic light in the future. I know that they're looking at Thompson Road, not for some sort of warning signal up that way. Um, so again, we're getting, we're getting to, from New Road all the way to Thompson Road to try to figure out what an appropriate plan is for that continued stretch, and I'm not sure that if we sit here and, um, allow the, uh, M D O T to dictate what they want to do and just wait, we may not get what we think may be appropriate there, so. Again, uh, you know, a light there, a light at Limerick, I, you know, I'm not arguing with you. It may be a possibility. Um, but I think that new road is probably more of a, um, a better attempt to get a, to get a light.
Um, new road, you have a turning thing.
Yeah, it's, new road isn't as bad as.
Okay.
Very rare to be in a serious accident.
Now.
No, no road used to be worse.
Okay.
Till everybody caught on. Now that everybody's using Old Rock Road, it's in this switching completely.
Okay.
New road's limited. And I think the only way you're going to really slow people down on one eleven is with traffic lights. Speed signs don't seem to work very well.
So do you, do you think it's appropriate for us to, uh, retain some expert analysis to look at that? Uh, and then provide them comments or just go ahead and send, send them a, um, a request for, for lighting considerations at Limerick Road?
The, the standard here is ridiculous, whether you feel comfortable or not with the speed. That's going to vary person to person.
Yeah.
Vehicle to vehicle.
Yeah.
That's nonsense.
If, if we, if we go, he wants us to go there and travel at forty miles an hour. Well, it's posted as fifty. If we go there at forty miles an hour, we're going to feel safe there when everybody's on your rear end trying to, it just doesn't make sense.
So, you know, as I said, it could be different for all of us, and the vehicle you're driving, you know, I'm, I'm, I'd feel safe in my vehicle, but if I'm Phil's truck, I'm, I'm fine, you know?
Right, right.
I, I think, you know, again, I'm, I'm for a light, but if, if we go after reducing the speed limit there, we need to have some enforcement there. We need to have somebody park there and start ticketing people. Maybe that will help slow down for a little while, although they'll go speed somewhere else, but.
I wish you guys, whatever you put on it, if you do, that's going to draw the traffic. So that area.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think I've said this before, if I'm heading during community season, uh, time, if I'm heading west on Route eleven, I take thirty-five up and hit the light in Lyman before trying to cross that traffic, even though it would be easier to cross the traffic and then hit Hill Road and, and go uphill road, but sometimes it can be very dangerous to do that, so.
You know what? What prompted the light at, at Hill, Hillworth Street? Did, did that come from us? I don't think so. They, they did that.
It was crash data from the D O T when.
Correct.
So I mean, we should look at that data. What's, what made them do that as against what's happening at?
Right.
Its other intersection. Maybe they're comparable, in which case they ought to be considered a light.
Yeah. Okay. So, so I'm hearing, um, based on your experiences, that that may be the appropriate way to, to tackle this as opposed to trying to deal with speed.
And I think the first thing that we need to do is, again, get the crash data. Because if you're up there once or twice a week, there's got to be some serious crash data at that intersection.
All that crash data gets reported to the state and it's on their website, so I mean, we, we have availability to grab it.
Um, the D O T knows about it. I mean, that, that's.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'd have to think back of what really prompted the, uh, hill road signal, if it was just crash data or if there was something else going on there. Do you recall, Terry? Yeah, neither do I.
Well, those, both studied for years on, on that intersection.
There was.
There were boxes and wires across one eleven for.
Yeah, that's, that's right. I remember that, how you say that, yeah.
Okay.
Volume drive or?
Yeah, because of hill road and the volume coming out of hill.
They couldn't get out. Right. And that's the problem right now. Everybody's backed up so long that they get impatient.
Right.
And then they think they can sneak out. That's, that's the problem with them.
That goes to Phil's point now. They changed the direction now, yeah. Yeah, they should, I mean, maybe that's the study they should do.
Yeah.
Rather than a crap or a speed stud.
The D O T is not very receptive to doing anything, and I can tell by Randy's emails.
When New Road was back way out, people started cutting Limerick Road.
Yeah.
And as they caught on, it, it kind of swept.
Okay.
Now, when Limerick goes back up, sometimes just a moment.
Yep. Yeah, it's pretty significant there. I've seen it, uh, quite bad there, so. Okay, well, we'll come up with a strategy and see what we can do in, in reference to trying to get some relief, at least some attention out there. I think that there's been a lot of, um, folks within the community, uh, elected officials, obviously, and, uh, representatives that have sort of weighed into this and. And some of them actually have been working on it for for many years. So hopefully we can push it on. On along. I think what frustrates me more than anything is that. Though we're the ones voicing concerns, then they then they want us to do these studies as opposed to. Listening, listening to what our common sense is telling us out there and then. Using their expertise to maybe come up with a solution that's appropriate. So. We'll see what we can do.
I mean, I liked Henry's note on, you know, he just can't wait, you know, just. You know, he he put together, you know, a pretty good note.
Yep.
Telling them, you know, something needs to be addressed now. Go look at it now instead of waiting, you know. But we haven't heard anything back from him on from his note.
Yeah, no, not a thing.
Okay, on on to business. On premises license, Ledgewood Pass disc golf.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the application for an on premises license. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Uh, this is right next to the mini golf.
Yeah, just a little bit further north on the.
All in favor? Just like that.
Yeah, I'll send it up now. You guys can sign it and print it.
You know, they actually played this. So what is the objective? I see the baskets in the woods, like when you have so many throws, you get it in the basket?
Yeah, well, so you you're not limited by a number. It's played like golf where, you know, like you'll set R. And there's a tee pad and you throw from there. And so say, you know, it's a part three, you gotta get to the lane. Usually it's a beam and ball in the basket. And that's that's a scoring stroke. So that if you didn't create it, it's part four, you're gonna hurt. You know, so definitely very similar to golf. I mean, different ground as well, but.
Are the discs any different or they would be a regular disc or?
Yeah, yeah. So I call Frisbee golf, but Frisbee is actually like a brand. So like like Band-Aids.
Yeah.
And Frisbee actually doesn't make this golf, this. But yeah, there's a. Probably fifteen layers in the main back room space for that, for the actual discs. And there's, you know, you've got putters and mid ranges and fairways and drivers. They're all shaped differently or irrid- irridantly. You have different ones that, depending on how you throw it, it will be more likely to turn to the right, turn to the left. So. With the shape of the fairway, they do some pretty cool things, but you're pretty good at it. Not me, but it's a lot of people.
I'm making an area that's having trouble.
So the it's a few parcels, mine for about thirty five acres. The parking lot is about one. So I mean, the actual horse itself is probably roughly about thirty acres. So, yeah, it's a pretty good track out there. Yeah, it 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 just blocked it. I think. And there's quite a bit of elevation to it up there too. So you can get your flights of stairs as well.
How many holes are those?
Uh, yeah, no, they they call them holes. And also, yeah, it's eighteen holes.
Eighteen holes.
We actually have the. If you're in the circle of disc golf, we we had basically who's considered the the best sports designer on the planet. Come in and design it.
Oh, nice.
Terrific. He, uh. Won a world championship that he had. So he just, he came in for a candidate for us. Pretty cool.
Wow.
It's gonna be fun. We'll actually even have a. If you guys don't want to go trekking through the woods, watch a simulator, the pro stuff as well. Throw a net and show you how this would fly.
You expect to open in the fall?
Yeah, we're hoping. I've been having committed to a date just yet. It's actually originally we were hoping spring of twenty twenty three. So you can see how that's gone.
Yeah.
But we're we're getting very close. I'd say right right now and now tentatively September fourteenth.
Thanks. Well, good luck.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Select Board Committee assignments.
Yeah, it appears that we need to have somebody representing the planning board, the RSA twenty one Finance Committee. And the RSU twenty one Directors Meeting. What's everybody's pleasure?
I'll stay with the Finance Committee if they don't mind.
I'll stay with the Directors Meeting and can occasionally do a planning board if needed.
What do you call it works?
I thought you were gonna say red department.
Yes.
I'll piggyback down on the planning, I guess.
These are tough for me.
Now, do we have to? Do we? I don't recall if we voted this. Can we vote it as a slate or did we just assign it and that's it?
I think we just assigned it.
Okay.
Our issue meets Monday night.
Yeah, the Finance Committee usually opens it, meets at seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning.
Change me to the R S U Directors.
Okay, so Dan and Jason at the Directors Meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
And how about Jason and Dan? You're also gonna do planning board?
No, I can take me off planning, please.
Okay.
Tuesday nights.
Tuesday nights are tough for me, but I'll try to make it every once in a while.
Okay.
Now you can say, I I can try to jump into.
Okay, so Dan and.
Need anything for the Z B A? They never meet, but.
Yeah.
So Dan and Tom are gonna work together for Planning Board and. Dan and Jason on the Directors Meeting. That. I have that right?
Yep.
There you go. Okay. That was easy.
Be ready for some long meetings.
Yeah. Well, you can take the first half of the meeting, give him the section. Payroll and payable warrants. We have two payables, one.
Well, I've got, I I want to do this assessor's return if I can. That's okay.
Even miss that one.
Right, it it's fine. Normally we have the tax assessor do it, but she's out on medical. I don't think she's gonna be back until after August. And I wanted to be sort of proactive. This needs to be submitted at least by the first day of September. So. I would look for a vote in a second on behalf of the town that you've signed the assessors return. So we can get ready to pay our county tax, which is. Three hundred and three thousand, two hundred and five dollars and sixteen cents.
What did we estimate that during when we did the budget?
Yeah, we were at two ninety seven and then. We got it the last minute that they were gonna be at three oh three.
We always get that way after we.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. And and we'll use that three oh three when we set the tax rate. With when she returns, which I'm hoping it will be. The mid to end of August. We'll be prepared to set the the tax rate at that point. We have the, we know what our municipal. Cost is less our revenue. We know what the school budget is. We know what the county is. All we have left for her to calculate would be the TIF. A TIF calculation that goes into the the rate and then we could prepare to set the rate.
Okay, motion's been made by Jason. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor? All ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now fill in the rest and.
We'll go from there.
All set? Okay. Payroll and payables. And we have two payables, one for at the end of last year and and one current. Motion made by Dan, seconded by Jason. All in favor of those? Okay.
Yeah, make sure we sign both warrants.
Yeah.
Last, last meeting, we neglected to.
Miss one?
Sign them all, yeah. And I do appreciate you folks coming in and sign that so we get that wrapped up.
Before we go to the next item. Paving looks good on Clearview Estates and Irving Road.
Yeah.
That must have been a bitch on Irving Road in the heat. Oh, my gosh.
They did all of Clearview and half of Irving like this one minute.
They put down the 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 chimney.
Yeah.
So then the second day they go in and then. They did Clearview and then all they they did.
Yeah. There was a couple of driveways there where people had gone and you could see the tire marks. They they must have gone in and fixed it because it's not. Yeah.
Hopefully they're gonna get the shoulder along. Yeah, pretty soon. Usually they do that on race days.
Yeah. Yeah. Looks good.
Yeah. And speaking of shoulders, Terry and I have already sort of prepped ourselves for phone calls relative to the shoulders in Clearview. Because if you look now, it appears, though I don't believe it was done that way, it appears that the grass comes to the edge of the. Edge of the roadway. So folks that are living there. Probably have an expectation that that's gonna be grass. Well, it's not grass. It's gravel. To shore up the side of the 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 road base. So. You folks may get a call complaining that we didn't put a grass back there, but there's a reason for that. I think all, if you looked at it, most of it's all crabgrass anyway. So.
Now that it's all clear. Limerick and Curtis.
Limerick, Curtis.
No, Brumstone.
Brumstone, yes, yes.
He and I haven't talked about that at all, so. It's a power schedule that I don't want to look at this bad.
Tom Flynn, you know.
We we still have to. Still have to clear the paperwork first, the deed first. Right, that's gonna get taken care of.
I'll make a motion we go into executive session.
Four oh five, six.
Discuss compensation of an employee seconded.
At what time?
Seven forty three.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to go into executive session. All in favor? All ready? We're going into executive session and that means that the door is gonna be locked and. We aren't recording. So.